Watering her lawn at the wrong time during that drought we had.
Mayor, this is C A. I've got seven o'clock if you want to get started.
Thank you, Brian. All right, everybody. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 4th, 2021 meeting at seven o'clock P M of the Oak Ridge City Council. I am calling this meeting to order. Brian, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just.
To Brian, Jackie, will you call to roll for us?
Mayor Holston.
Here.
Counselor Bjornson. Counselor Whitney.
Here.
Counselor Coker. Counselor Hollit.
Here.
Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Counselor Spleedoff is away and has an excused absence.
Okay, so Counselor Bjornson isn't.
Okay, well, let's watch. Maybe she'll dial in soon.
I just saw her check in, so she should be.
That's great. Welcome, Melissa. Counsel, please make every effort to put your face up on the screen. I once again have getting comments from our public asking that they be able to see their counselors as they're being addressed. And I understand that there is always some, sometimes that is difficult, but I think the majority of the time I would encourage you to have your face up so that you can address your community. Is there any reason why that is impossible for a counselor? If so.
Counselor Hollit here. Happens for me and it's happened many times. I lose connectivity.
Okay, and in the last two years, you haven't been able to solve that problem. Okay, all right.
And Mayor, this is C A. Here. We were having some video problems here at City Hall. I've tried two webcams. We've got good audio and we have two citizens, so if they, if you should be able to hear them.
All right, well, you know, we may discover that this weather is going to get all of us a bit of a, a bit of a problem. Melissa, would you, will you be able to join us in person at all by face, I guess? How do we call that? On face?
When I'm at home, my connection lags much. I don't know if it's because I have a large family or where, where I'm at in town. I'm not sure why, but it just doesn't work well. I can't hear. It starts to cut out.
All right, so that's your best. Counselor Coker, are you able to?
Have the same problem as I'm up here on the hill as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I think it's important for the community to know why they don't see you, and I understand that there is connectivity issues. Let's move on. Additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? I have one addition to business of the city council. I will be at nine point three, which is a letter of support from Hopeberry to the Forest Service concerning Hopeberry Flats. There is a timeline as due to that one, so I, I can't postpone it to the next meeting. Brian, do you have any corrections or additions or adjustments?
Just to verify that all the council got the updated items that I sent out, I believe, on Monday for nine point one and nine point two.
Okay. And counsel, did you receive those?
Yes.
All right, great.
If that's what, was Mayor Holston that sent that out?
No. The C A. Did.
Well, let me double check then.
Thank you. Right. Any other counsel have any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda before we move forward? All right, seeing none. I also want to want the council to be aware that our city attorney, Matt Strom, is here with us this evening. Thank Matt for joining us. I appreciate it. And let's move into public comment. As you know, Brian, you've indicated there's a couple folks in person where you are, and as always, if any member of the public would like to make comments, we are limited to three minutes. As always, if you'll unmute yourself and identify yourself, then I can put you in queue. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna look. Your hands pop up or people unmuting. Counsel, if you'll help peruse the screen to make sure I don't miss anybody, that would be really helpful. I'm not seeing any hands popping up or mics unmuting. So, oh, there's Sarah Ultimus Pope. I see you. Okay, and Brian, do we have anybody at, at your location at City Hall?
Speak. Yeah, we have one. Would you like to go, her to go now?
Yeah, let's go ahead and let go first. Thank you.
You're not on video though, because it doesn't work.
Hi, my name is Mary. And I first heard about Brian resigning from somebody in the community, and I was shocked. He's done a fantastic job, and I want to know what happened.
Thank you, Mary. Were you aware, you able to read his letter of resignation? And is that something you were aware of?
No, I'm not on the internet.
Okay, all right. I'll make sure that you got that letter of resignation and it will probably be, be read during the meeting. If you're gonna hold on, if you're not gonna hold on, I'll get your contact information from Brian and get it to you.
I'm gonna read it.
Okay, that's great, Mary. Thank you. Sarah, go ahead, please.
Hi, Sarah Ultimus Pope, four eight one two one Central Street, and speaking tonight, just from my opinions on the comments I want to make, so I'm gonna try to read them here. I'd like to comment on the recent news. The administrator Ketchin will be resigning. I want to register my opinion with the council that this is extremely unfortunate and not the council's responsibility and role that's led to this outcome. In the C A.'s resignation letter to the council, he states there's a working relationship lacking trust and respect. I hope what I hear from this council is a commitment to resolve this division and request the C A. To stay in his position. We need strong and secure leadership that Brian offers during this tumultuous time. We need a leader with integrity and resolve. And we are at the edge of an economic cliff as a community, and this council bears the responsibility to pull us back from the brink. In June, I spoke, asked the council to pass emergency services fee as a stopgap measure and immediately begin a levy campaign to raise the needed funds that would solve the problem permanently. I also asked council to start a fire districting committee to explore ways to find efficiencies working with our neighbors. Council did neither. And you drug your feet months even passing the fee, which everyone knew wasn't edible, because there's no ways to raise the funds needed. We can't cut our way out of this hole and still provide the basic sewer, water, and safety services the community needs. You, counsel, are choosing gridlock and inaction, and you're failing your voters. You fail them even more treating our public servants who are professionals with disrespect and suspicion. Stoking fears and derision is not leadership. Looking for scapegoat and hiding from hard decisions might be politically advantageous, but costs our community in the end. I ask you tonight, what is it you're bringing to your community as elected officials, and why is it that you serve? You should be able to tell your community at this moment your plan for economic recovery and the steps you have taken to get there. If you don't have answers to these questions right now, step down. You need months to work on these problems, but what I've seen is that you would rather shoot holes in any proposal your state brings to you instead of joining the effort yourself and helping navigate to a better place. We have major challenges to face as a community and also incredible opportunities to make some headway at fixing them. There are big federal funding proposals that could help our community immensely. There are also regional partners leaning in who want to work with Oak Ridge. We need a C A. At Brian's caliber, who can balance multiple big projects at once and who needs to be able to focus on these projects that bring positive change or working on solving existing problems such as how to adequately fund our EMS services and fire department wastewater system improvements and prepare for future wildfires. You, counsel, should be focusing on the long-term policy fixes to our budget needs, redistricting, a levy, advocating to state leaders for higher medical reimbursements, among other things. That your responsibility, your duty, and where you can make a difference. So please, get off of Facebook, turn on your cameras, get back in a room together and start looking and working like a team. The community is watching, and we need you to do your job. If you aren't offering solutions, then you are part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there anyone else who wish to do a public comment? Again, counsel, help me out. It's a big screen in here today. If you see anyone pop up. I don't see anyone else who wishes to make public comment. Thank you. Let's move on to number six, mayor comments. I have a, a couple of things that I just wanted to share. It's been a tumultuous week, but I did have a meeting that I wanted to share with counsel. With Saint Vinitis on Wednesday morning, I went into town to meet with Mr. McDonald. As you know, we've mentioned that, or I've mentioned to you that he is interested in refurbishing or refurbishing or reclaiming what is, what is reclaimable in the WAC. Adding to it, building, new building to provide services for us. And that we were discussing with him, the exchange of, of certain property that he could use to add to housing. I met with him on Wednesday morning to, to determine our next steps were after having met with he and Brian. At that time, unfortunately, he informed me that he no longer is interested in, in investing in Oak Ridge. He has withdrawn interest in the project because of the instability and the mess of our council. He is working with the U W C D C for a solution to finding a location in Oak Ridge when the WAC is closed. He in good conscience, he is interested in Oak Ridge. We reaffirm that he always will be, but he cannot in good conscience invest anywhere where it involves working, working with, excuse me, city government. It is in, in his opinion, an unwise investment and unstable. He did extend his best wishes to the city administrator for a job well to the mayor, and he expressed his sorrow that appeared to be a breath of fresh air for Oak Ridge was not to be. Instead, Oak Ridge, in his opinion, has moved back ten years again. I share this with the council only to remind us that all of our actions have consequences, and this one is particularly disappointing. I have, I'm sorry, but it was a difficult meeting. I have great respect for Mr. McDonald and his organization and their repeated interest in Oak Ridge and his interest in providing growth opportunities for us. And I wanted to share this with you, and he encouraged me to share his love with you in, in the hopes that this council would realize how important it is for us to try to set aside our differences and to really work for solutions. Other than that, I just want to remind everybody that the fundraiser for the food bank, Kagan, that Kagan Cask is putting on is on Saturday. And it would be nice to see all of you out there. I also want to thank the community for their, their participation in the Harvest Festival. That was done very well on Halloween, and everyone had a good time. I think I tried still pies of pumpkin that I've never tried before, and it was a rather unique experience. I have to get down to Marissa to find out what she put in her pie, because it was, it was truly unique. I don't have any announcements. I will move to number seven, council comments. Counsel, this is your opportunity for comments or announcements. Do you have any? I don't see any. If I'm missing someone, please don't hesitate to pop up and say, oh, Counselor Kenyon, I see your hand. It looked like you were trying to find the hand button.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to acknowledge that it was wrong for me to leave the council meeting last week when I did, and I'm upset, and it won't happen again.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. I know that that comes from your heart. Anyone else? All right, let's move on then into the consent agenda. Our consent agenda tonight consists of minutes from the October 7th, 2021 meeting as well as the strategic, strategic, strategic plans or card update, which is a mouthful. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney.
Second that.
Thank you, Counselor Coker. This was made by Counselor Whitney, seconded by Counselor Coker. Jackie, will you offer a vote, please? I don't hear you, Jackie.
I was trying to pay for, sorry.
No problem.
Mayor Holston.
Here, I.
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Counselor Hollit.
Hi.
And Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
And, oh, Counselor Bjornson. I forgot she showed up.
Indeed, here. Thank counsel. Let's move on to the business from the city council. We're gonna start with nine point one. I, this is the C A. Resignation and formal acceptance. Just to kind of kick us off here, let me grab my piece of paper here. I'll just repeat what you see here is I did consult Matt, our city attorney, to determine what necessary steps we needed to take what the proper method to do it. So the agenda item is based on suggestions. The, it was suggested that the city council formally acknowledge the resignation of the city administrator, deliver the email and the resignation effective date of February 28th, 22. The council should also recognize the professional courtesy extended to the council with a longer than required notice. And the council should also acknowledge the automatic renewal clause will not come into effect. It was also suggested that not pursue an evaluation as it would be an inappropriate use of the council's time. Here is, here is this. I will say here is our agenda item, and it will be open discussion once a motion has been made. Do I hear a motion?
Can we scroll to that part of the screen, please? Oh, sorry.
Counsel, I am looking for a motion. If, if for some reason you don't have it in front of you, it's on the screen. If you don't want to make a motion, then we will set it aside.
So do we have to accept resignation?
Regardless of whether we accept the resignation, the resignation is in effect, but maybe Matt can speak to that.
That's the reason why I, I spoke briefly with the mayor earlier this week is that we renewed the, the contract for the city administrator. We included in it that there was an automatic renewal after the first year unless, unless the council provided notice ninety days prior to that renewal date, which is in June of 2022. So if we're, you know, knowing that the city administrator has delivered this resignation, that the, the council should put together, and I think the mayor included in the details a, a letter from, from the mayor, just kind of formally accepting that, and that's because there has to be something in writing delivered to the C A. Because this city administrator works for the entire council, I think it's most appropriate that if something's going to be delivered to him on behalf of the city that it comes from the council pool. Does that answer your, your question, Counselor Whitney?
It does, and I kind of assumed that was the answer. I'm, I'm just, I just feel like, well, with this resignation, I, I understand, but I think our city administrator has done a great job, and I find this very sad, and it's really hard for me to even want to acknowledge the resignation. Let alone make a motion, you know.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney, for your thoughts. Counselor Kenyon, go please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm willing to make the motion, but I'm I just don't understand the part in here that says and acknowledging the existing contract requires only a sixty day notice. What it, what is there?
Our existing contract only required a sixty day notice, and he has given us a longer than sixty day notice in order to prepare to, in order to hopefully find a new city administrator and to prepare or at least have a process in place. And also to pass over everything that we, he'll need to, to either new, to a new city administrator or to enact in a city administration.
So that, so that is the reason for the extended time is because he wants to work with the new city administrator?
It's just recognizing that it's like, that it was a professional courtesy that he committed to, to helping in any way possible, the transition.
Okay, I'll read the motion. Whereas the Oak Ridge City Council is in receipt of a letter of resignation from city administrator Brian Ketchin dated October 22nd, 2021, with an effective date of February 28th, 2022. And acknowledging the existing contract requires only a sixty day notice and acknowledging and informing the city administrator Brian Ketchin that the automatic renewal of the existing contract is void. Be it resolved that the Oak Ridge City Council acknowledges and accepts the letter of resignation and effective date.
Motion was made by Counselor Kenyon. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by, by Counselor Hollit. Thank you. It's open for discussion. Counsel, is there any discussion?
I have, just, I have some comments to make.
Okay, and Counselor Coker, I see your hand up too. So Counselor Coker, would you go first, and then Counselor Hollit?
I know it's rarely a comment. I was just curious before we formally accept this and vote on this, if Brian would be willing to sit down and speak with all of us?
Speak with all of us individually or as a, as a council?
As a council.
And to the end of you have, just have questions that you would like, like to ask of him? I mean, we are all here right now.
Not just to see if we can possibly work something out?
So what you're asking is if there is a possibility for a resolution of the conflict that is going on, and would he be willing to work toward a resolution?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Coker. That's a, that's a very good comment. And I will, I will hold that comment before we reach out to the city administrator and Counselor Hollit. You had some comments you wanted to make?
Yes, I wanted, one sec. Yes, I wanted, one sec. I wanted to recognize that I do appreciate a lot of the work that Brian has done for the city of Oak Ridge and the citizens here, and that he has very many one attributes that we need to look for in a city administrator. And I really thought really hard about his resignation letter, and I just wanted to put it out there that as counselors, the direction that things happen and the way that votes go are the way that citizens direct us. So I guess the words vision, when Brian used that word vision in his resignation letter, it really, I really tried to, just that word just really stuck out. And I think that for me, it's not about my vision or Brian's vision. It's about the citizens' visions of Oak Ridge. And so as much as it might hurt, I do think that Brian is right, that he's put a lot of work into this, and there is sort of an impasse right now, and the citizens of Oak Ridge have a different vision than what Brian has.
Thank you for your thoughts, Counselor Hollit. Is there, Brian, Counselor Coke, Counselor Coker made the, made the suggestion that perhaps there would be a way for counseling you to sit down and come to, come to some decision as to moving forward? Is that something that you would be willing to entertain?
Well, I, I work at the pleasure of the council. However, I, I really don't, you know, I'm, I'm very happy to sit down with, with all seven or individually, however you would like. I, I just don't see, you're elected officials, and as Counselor Hollit said, you're speaking for the people of Oak Ridge. So I, that said, I, I don't know if we could ever come to an agreement on the way the city should move forward from what I've experienced so far. So I, I, like I said, I'm happy to sit down with each of you and speak to you and, and, or as a group.
Thank you for that, Brian. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Brian. Are there any comments from counsel? So I'm going to just interject here. There is someone who is friends of 90 by 30, and you have inadvertently unmuted yourself, and you have a very sweet child making noises. So could you re-mute yourself? That would, there you go. Thank you.
Kathy, you muted yourself.
Yeah, no, I actually think Brian muted everybody and then I unmuted me. Sorry about that, guys. All right. If there's no further, further discussion, I certainly don't want to get into a back and forth. I, I truly believe that Brian, my comments are, that Brian's vision isn't Brian's vision. It's a vision that the council has given him, and his, his endeavors have always been in that direction. That, that I, each counselor has to have a vision of the community and, and where they can move forward. And I think we all differ a little bit on that. And, and I am sad to see him, him go, and I'm sad to see that we have to accept a resignation from him. We have a huge task in front of us. I hope that we're up to it. Jackie, will you call for a vote? Oh, excuse me. Just a moment, Jackie. Matt, did you have something you'd like to interject with?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, I, I wanted to make sure I, that I was clear enough to the council that included in the packet, I think a, a vote on this motion, if, if the vote is yes, would also include delivery of the letter that you drafted, Mayor, from you to, to Brian. So I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that that would, it's not encapsulated in the motion, but it's a necessary step based on the vote to be in compliant with this contract.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Counsel, did you, were you all aware and had, and saw the, that letter in your packet? Okay. All right. Good. Thank you, Matt, for bringing that up. Jackie, go ahead and, and call for a vote, please.
Counselor Whitney? Counselor Hollit?
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
Mayor Holston?
Nay.
Counselor Coker?
Hi.
Thank you, counsel. I think that was everybody, right, Jackie?
Yes.
I'm losing count. All right. Thank you. All right. I appreciate that. We are going to move on to nine point two, which is just a discussion only. As you know, we will need to begin a process to hire. We have been through this before, some of us, some of us not. So I, I've put a few questions out here in the agenda just to kind of stir the pot. And, and maybe that's not the right, to salt the oats, maybe, to get us thinking about what our next steps are. So I will just open this up for discussion of counsel. Counselor Kenyon, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. I am pretty sure I remember a couple of years ago, I wasn't on the council at the time, but the council created some kind of a policy or process on filling vacancies with pro temp administrator and then a process to follow for the hiring of a new city administrator. Do you remember that, Mayor Holston?
Um, yeah, we, we did put together a process. We first started with the hiring as far as job description. So we're going to need to tackle the job description and, you know, revise the one that is there or change it or, or accept just what it is. Then notification to the League of Oregon Cities as well as ElCog that we will be possibly in need of a temporary pro temp or a temporary city administrator, should we, should we get to that point and not have a candidate at such time that Brian leaves after February 28th? If we haven't, then we can make a choice, as we get closer to that, we can make a choice as to whether we want to hire a, hire a temporary city administrator, or we want to appoint someone within our city governance to be a pro temp. If, if we, as counsel, believe that that is a way that we can go. So we have some, we have several kind of different options. Right now, I think the important thing is that we begin thinking about what is it? What is the job description of the city administrator? What can we, we afford? And that's going to be discussions with, you know, with, with us. I urge you, I just encourage you, even at this last few months, to go in and talk to Brian and talk to him about what he is doing, what he's covering, so that you have a good feel for what it is that is, that passes over his desk and, you know, what it means to be the fire chief, to be the city administrator, to be the planner. And perhaps give yourself a good broad overview of what it is that we're, we are hiring here. Bobby, go ahead.
Oh, Mayor, I wasn't done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I, I was just thinking that it would be appropriate to maybe get those documents together, the processes that are already lined out. I believe by either resolution, probably resolution, not ordinance.
Yeah.
And get the, like you mentioned, the job description, and then maybe do a work session where we could talk about the process that we want to do without having that kind of information in front of us. I'm, I'm just not sure how much we would be able to accomplish in discussing it.
Right. Exactly. I agree with you. Um, I just wanted to make sure we opened the door to the, to the possibility. I'll, I, I will dig through and see what I can find from our past, past endeavors. I think I have it all shoved in a box marked with a large black X, but I can dig them back up again.
Thank you. I'm done.
Hi, hi, y'all. I'm here.
Hi, Mayor. Hi. So I don't know who's student is.
My, my name is Mark. I'm, I'm, I'm a journalist, and I'm working for the Yeah. Hi. Can I ask you guys to please? I'm having, I'm in a, I'm in a weird spot right now where I can't hear, well, not, I can hear it. You're cutting in and out.
Would you like us to speak up, Mark?
Okay.
Would you like us to speak up?
Yeah, my wifi is dead. Can you guys please take this recording and publish it right away? Because I gotta, I'm supposed to deliver a story by two o'clock tomorrow.
Well, we typically post the recorded, the recorded meeting as soon as possible. So look forward in the morning.
Um, tonight would be really, really good.
Okay, Mark, I appreciate it, but I, I do would like to get on with the business of the council now.
Thank.
You're welcome. Counselor Whitney, go ahead, please.
So, um, the last time we went through this process, it was a little different because the circumstances of Louis leaving was different, which is why we had some temporary city administrators in place. So this situation is definitely different. We have a little more time. And so that may not be something that we need, but do you remember how much it costed last time, Kathy?
You know, I think I, I could probably guess, but I think it'd be better if we pull up the documentation and, and do it. You know, like, I think Counselor Kenyon is right. We want to have just an initial brush over and then put together a couple of work sessions, get them on the calendar so that we can review all of this and go from.
Yeah. Yeah. And last time, you know, ElCog helped us with the process. So I think it would be important to find out if they're willing to do that again.
I will, I have already reached out to them to let them know that, that we may be needing services in, in many different forms. So they are aware of that. Counselor Hollit, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, I was just gonna say with Howard having retired, he was who helped us. So I, you know, I just, I really hope.
That we are able to. Retirement and reach in and grab him.
I don't know if he'd be willing to come here or not.
Thank you. Anything else, Bobby?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Hollit.
Thank you. I really agree.
You muted yourself.
Sorry about that. I didn't know it was in the background. I really think that it would be beneficial to all of the counselors if we do move forward with a work session, as you and Counselor Kenyon were discussing, and looking at the process for pro temp and looking at the process for permanent replacement. And I think we should conduct that work session before we move forward with getting ElCog involved too much because I think it's really important that everybody understand what the process is and what we're going to be moving into before we get too far into that and hiring out ElCog and, and all that stuff. I think it's fair that all the counselors really have a good understanding of what the differences are and what we would be moving into.
Okay. Sounds good. Counsel, let's look at our calendars, and I would love to get a couple of sessions on the calendar. Definitely one in this month, for sure. I can see that it would probably be good to have, you know, a two-hour session. And I need to know, I know it's getting toward the holidays, and I know that that is a crazy time for you, but do I, any of you have availability on on Thursday, November 11th in the evening? That's, that is Veterans Day.
Says Counselor Coker. That'll work good for me.
Okay.
I'm available. This is.
Okay. Bjornson, the 11th?
If it's, since it's Veterans Day, I won't be able to do that evening. Sorry.
Okay. All right.
I'm unavailable that day as well. Is there any way we could look at a weekend?
So let's look at Saturday, the 13th. Can you look quickly at your calendars?
I'm afraid I'm out of town that weekend. And isn't the following one Thanksgiving, or do we know?
Thanksgiving is the, the 18th or the 25th, fourth through Thursday? Oh, yeah. The 25th is, is Thanksgiving, Thursday.
Mayor, do you want me to put out a doodle poll tomorrow to make it simpler?
Yeah, would you do that? Let's do that.
Thank you, Brian.
Two sessions? Okay.
Awesome. All right. Well, let's do that. Okay. Well, let's move, let's move on to the next agenda item, nine point three. Knowing that we'll have a work session to discuss this and hopefully have some more documentation that we can share with everybody and, and give an overview of, of what the next process is. Okay, so I, you don't have nine point three, and so what I'm going to do is just talk to you, and I think Brian has put it, put it up on the screen for you to read too. So the Willamette National Forest, Chris Bettner, got ahold of me and said that they are planning and have had in the works for some time expansion of the Huckleberry Flats area. And that would, will include more trails, what broader trails, improved road access, a campground. And he asked, because of our proximity and because we benefit economically from, from those people that use OHP area, it would be helpful to the Forest Service if he received a, a letter of support. So I, I asked him some questions about it, and, and he responded to me about what it was that was happening, three miles of new trail, staging area, a improved campground. And I told him that I would bring it to council to see if you were willing to send a letter of support to our, one of our near and dear partners, the Middle Fork District of the Willamette National Forest. So the fiscal impact is, is none other than brings business to town. So in a secondary and tertiary way, there's, there's an impact. And the motion is at the bottom. It's a motion to support the improvements at the Huckleberry Flats Recreation Area and provide a letter of support to the Middle Fork Ranger District from the city of Oak Ridge. So can I get a motion from counsel?
Yes. I move to support the improvements at the Huckleberry Flats Recreation Area, provide a letter of support to the Middle Fork Ranger District from the city of Oak Ridge. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Whitney and seconded by Counselor Coker. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or discussion? Seen, I don't see anybody. I haven't missed anybody. Okay. Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Whitney?
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson?
Hi.
Counselor Hollit?
Hi.
Counselor Coker? Mayor Holston?
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon?
Hi.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Jackie. That passes. And thank you, counsel, for, for your patience and allowing me to add this at the last minute. I will put together a letter and send it off to the Willamette National Forest in support of the Huckleberry Flats expansion. Let's move to business of the city administrator, 10.1, city engineer. Brian, go ahead.
This is 10.1. We're looking for a motion from the floor. And the title is city engineer request for proposals cancellation. So there are errors made in my haste to put together the package and to get this process done at the, at the direction of council in the evaluation and selection process for the city engineer of record. The problem was the process was not consistent with section three of the RFP for the following reasons, the scoring. For the following reasons, the scoring process was not done as described. It, it, uh, the RFP requires a weighted scoring and it was just raw scores that, uh, that you saw last session. Second, uh, reading the RFP, the only two options available to the city council, uh, when looking at the, uh, the recommendation of the committee is to select their recommended candidate or cancel the RFP and republish it. Uh, as we saw, uh, it, a candidate was selected that was not the highest scoring candidate. So, to avoid the possibility of a protest, in either case, I think the RFP should be canceled and republished with an accelerated timeline. I've talked to, uh, or I can talk to the candidates in question and see if they'll just leave their art, their proposal in place that could accelerate it and then leave it open for perhaps a month for any additional folks that would come in and want to compete and then come back and do it the correct way in the scoring and the correct way in the selection. Uh, so your options are, are to cancel the RFP and republish a new request or, or not. And then, uh, or you can choose the highest scoring candidate and I think those, any of, either of those two options would, minimize protests, but option two would also invite a protest, maybe. So, uh, I would recommend option one, uh, and, and republish the RFP.
Alright, I think what I'd like to do is open this up for questions before we move, go into a motion. Um, and I don't, I, I just want to do a little bit of housekeeping. I see a phone that is called Sherry's iPhone and you are unmuted. Um, you also have a hand raised and we are not accepting public comment at this time, so just so that you know that I'm not ignoring you. But I'm also not going to acknowledge you. Would you mute your phone for me? That would be helpful.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. Um, alright, um, Counsel Kenyon, I see your hand up. Do you have some questions before we proceed any further?
Um, yeah, well, I had my hand up to discuss, but I just realized we don't have a motion yet, so are you opening to discuss first?
I am, yes, I'm gonna open to discuss first, because I know it's, so we probably have some questions about this.
Okay, yes, um, I do agree that, um, the scoring stuff wasn't done properly and that we probably need to cancel the, um, request for proposal, but what, uh, I have a, a concern with is the selection committee. I believe we need to start over with that process and do that, um, by selecting, having the council select a committee for that, rather than it being, um, appointed by administration. We haven't ever done that in the past, I know. We usually appoint, the council appoints a committee.
So you want to change the process? That.
Well, I, I want to follow the process that we're used to following, which is having the council select a committee.
So you want to change the process? Okay, I get it. Um, um, alright, thank you for those comments. Um, any other questions or comments before we get into this? Okay. Alright, so you see that, you see the agenda item on there and you see the recommended motion. Can I have a motion?
I move, we cancel the request for a proposal dated June 15th, 2021 and republish the request.
And do I hear a second?
I second that, Counsel Bjornson.
Thank you, Counsel Bjornson. The motion was made by Counsel Kenyon and seconded by Counsel Bjornson. Um, I will open it up for any other discussions. Does, counsel, do you understand what, what, why we're redoing this? Um, go ahead, Bobby.
Uh, it's clear to me why we're redoing this and I was going to say, um, I think it's great to have a staff member on this committee. So I think, hopefully moving forward, we keep including a staff member that works with, with our city engineer on a regular basis, specifically Robert. I think, um, that's a really good person to have included in this because that's somebody that works closely with, um, the engineer and would, and would really know what we're looking for and what we need and already has their, you know, the boots on the ground of what's doing the work, of who's doing the work, so.
Thank you for those thoughts. Yeah, I agree with you. I agree. Counsel Hollid, I see your hand.
I lost my train of thought. I'll come back or can you come back to me?
I will. Try to write it down if you're, if it comes back choo-chooing through your room. Um, uh, yeah, I agree. I mean, I don't have a problem with, with appointing a, a different committee or, uh, allowing that. But I do think that in a, in a case as this, we need to have, um, community members who have, um, some background and experience in what we are looking for. Um, and that it be a process, um, that is very tight. We need to get this going quickly. Um, so I would say that we could put out a request to, um, for a committee, um, and give it a short, a short window. Um, uh, invite community members to apply, uh, review them as quickly as, as possible with the idea that it is important that it's not filling a seat, it's filling a seat with someone who is knowledgeable about these, these things. Um, and I agree with you, Bobby, we should, should definitely have a, a member of the staff who, who works with us involved in it as well as, um, the CA. Um, and now I've lost my train of thought, Counsel Hollid. Have you brought yours back up again?
No, I think, yeah, I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Okay, so we've had a, uh, we've had a second and, uh, or a motion and a second. Um, let's go ahead and, and call for a vote, Jackie.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Alright, that passes. Uh, thank you, counsel. And Brian, as you begin to put together a, a new, a new group, I know we're trying to do this as expeditiously as possible. Um, so let's keep that in mind as we move forward, counsel. Um, that we don't want this to lag on too terribly long, but we'll expect to have something, something ready to be up and running, um, by the next meeting. Are we having a next meeting? Yes, we are. It doesn't fall on, yeah, uh, it doesn't fall on Thanksgiving. Um, alright, let's move on to, um, the reports from boards, commissions and committees. Do we have an admin advisory report? And I'm happy to just check it off if we don't.
I'll hand it over to the chairman to respond.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't catch, are you talking about admin?
Yeah, do we have an admin report?
Um, I can briefly update. We ha, actually haven't met yet. We're meeting next week again, but, um, what we've done so far is put out a, um, an advertisement to the community that we were looking for applicants for the, um, for the charter review committee. And we have received eight applications and we will be reviewing those at our next meeting. And then we plan on starting, um, the, um, the subcommittee meeting right after the New Year in January.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Community Services?
Um, I have to say I missed part of the meeting due to, um, children's activities. So I don't have a full update unless Brian has something he would like to bring forward.
Uh, the last meeting, we, uh, we just got updates on, uh, the Diamond View Park, uh, and, and how that integrates with the pump track. As well as, uh, talked a little bit about the effort for, uh, to put a level two state, uh, EV charging station somewhere in the city. Uh, and as far as, uh, let's see, I think there's anything else, uh, there was an update on, uh, the efforts at Green Waters, so. So, no major loads or anything, but we are having a meeting next week, uh, with some, with some good topics.
Good. Thank you.
It was a pretty, yeah, it was a pretty short, quick meeting, so.
Okay. Counsel Hollid, your hands up.
Uh, I just wanted to acknowledge that we had an application for charter review come to our email and I wanted to make sure that that went to Brian as well.
We got that.
Yes, it did.
Thank you.
Thank you for checking on that. I appreciate it. Uh, let's see, and, um, I will just say briefly that the RTMP committee met yesterday. We had a really productive discussion about, um, how to go about, uh, looking at our, our TMP funds. And we will have something to bring to council, um, at our next meeting, so, um, stay tuned. Uh, let's, let's move on to 13 and.
Um, yes, Mayor, before we move on, I wanted to quickly ask, we, we skipped over the, um, we got another update from a strategic plan scorecard in this packet?
Yes.
I don't know.
That was in our consent agenda.
Oh, consent agenda, okay, so I, I apologize, I missed that it was in there, but I would like to know if it's possible, um, to maybe have this and some other information that we could do a work session on before, um, before Brian leaves, where he could actually really update us verbally on the status of this, all these, um, this, the scorecard is huge.
Yes, it is. There's a lot of, lot of work there.
And then, so I have a lot of questions about.
Yes, then, and, and we definitely will as we move forward in, in, uh, what our next steps are for replacing Brian. Um, part of that, in my opinion, should also be updating counsel on where we are with, with various projects. Um, so that we have a, a better awareness of everything that is going on and that will be using that scorecard. And I will remind everyone that that scorecard is available to them at any time, um, to take a look at. Um, so, um, don't wait until it's thrown into your packet. Um, you know, familiarize yourself with it ahead of time, which is always a good thing. I know it's hard to, it's hard to stay on top of all of that. Okay, let's, um, move on to the, our 13 resolutions. We have two resolutions before we begin. Um, in these, can I get a motion to suspend the rules, um, to vote on the resolutions in one vote?
Uh, um, before I would do that, I need to understand what the resolutions are. I'm sorry, I don't have, um, I don't have a printed packet in front of me, so I really need to see what you're talking about before we do that.
The two resolutions are, is supplemental, but the other is an authorizing loan. And the purpose of the, of what we typically do with the motion to suspend the rules, I'll just remind everybody is that in our council rules of procedure, we inadvertently created a process for resolutions that we don't usually do as far as having them read in two meetings. Um, and we had agreed as on council that when we went to vote on resolution, that we would suspend the rules so that that would not apply and we could actually vote on a resolution at, at one, one city rather than in two. So, um, we're moving into resolutions. Um, I, um, I'm asking for a motion to suspend the rules for this.
Uh, we suspend the rules, these two resolutions that we're about to discuss.
Thank you, Counsel Kenyon. Is that seconded?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counsel Coker. Um, Jackie, call for a vote, please.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Bjorn?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
I'm gonna declare a conflict since this is a part of the budget, so I will not be discussing or voting.
Alright, is that everybody, Jackie?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, it's funny how just having one person got, and just throws the rhythm off and I lose track of the count every time. Um, okay, thank you. Um, let's move into resolution 11, 2021, which is a supplemental budget for Berry and Gardens, Garden overlays. Um, and, um, I see Melissa's hand. And, go ahead, Melissa. I recognize you.
Thanks, Kathy. I, uh, just wanted to, to declare my potential conflict of interest since this has to do with the budget since I'm on the volunteer roster for the fire department, just to be cautious.
Alright, is there anyone else who needs to declare a potential conflict of interest because of themselves or a family member?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna declare an actual conflict because this has to do with the budget. My husband works for the City of Oak Ridge and works under a collective unit contract.
Thank you, Counsel Hollid. Alright. Okay, let's move on. Resolution 11, 2021. Brian, this is on the screen, uh, counsel. And, um, can you walk us through this, Brian?
Sure, it's a, a supplemental budget for fiscal year 21, 22. Uh, the exhibit was the resolution. Uh, we're looking for a motion from the floor to approve the resolution. So, uh, as you know, um, we did receive a, uh, small city allotment grant. This, uh, this actually was received last fiscal year, but, or, no, actually, no, it wasn't because of the, it's a reimbursable. So we got approved for it last year. We repaved Berry and Garden Streets and submitted for reimbursement. We have, we have it, uh, paid off the contractor and we've also received the reimbursement from, um, ODOT. So to recognize that, uh, expenditure that was not in the budget that was adopted, uh, in June of 21, we need a supplemental to account for that. Uh, your options are to adopt the resolution or reject the resolution and we're recommending that we adopt it and, uh, the motions before you.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel, can I hear a motion, please?
Um, I move we adopt resolution 11 dash 21, providing a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021 dash 22.
Thank you, Counsel Whitney. Do I hear a second?
I'll second this, Counsel Bjornson.
Counsel Bjornson is seconding that question. Um, now we'll open for discussion. Do we have any questions, um, about this or? At all, before we move into a vote? I'm looking at my screen. Don't be shy, please. I don't see so much at a time here. Okay, if there are no questions, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Counsel Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt? Oh, nevermind. Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Coker? That's all.
And did you get an I or a A from Counsel Hollid?
Uh, she was.
That's right. Boy, you know, this, this rhythm is really off tonight. Thank you for the reminder. Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on then to the next, uh, resolution, which is, um, 12, 2021. Uh, Brian, will you set us up here?
Okay, this is authorizing a loan from the Safe Water, Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Fund. Um, essentially, it's, it's IFA from Business Oregon. Um, you have the resolution which is required by IFA. And we also have the exhibit, which is the loan contract, which would, this, uh, motion would also allow you to sign that. Um, so as you know, we agreed some time ago that the rehabilitation of well number two, our highest producing well, was needed. Uh, earlier in the year, we had a failure on the top side of it and we actually replaced the, the generator or the, the electric motor. But there's still an apparatus in the ground that needs to be replaced, um, and, and rehabilitated. So, uh, to do that, uh, we've asked for a loan from IFA. It's 1%, a term of 30 years. Uh, it has a forgiveness of 135,000, so in the end, uh, the, the city principal, if we abide by the contract, is, would be 125,000. Um, so depending on expenditures, the, given the size of that, that loan, you're looking at 48, 24 annual payment. Your options are to adopt the resolution and approve the loan contract or do not adopt it and, uh, or approve the loan contract. We're recommending option one. Uh, we would time this, uh, project, uh, during a, a time of the year at low, uh, water consumption, uh, which would be not the summer months, so, uh, if we're lucky, we could get it done, uh, maybe in the spring, uh, before, uh, people start watering their lawns, so. The motion's before you.
Thank you, Brian. Um, do you hear a motion from counsel?
I move.
Oh, sorry, uh.
Oh, sorry, uh, I move we adopt Resolution twelve dash twenty-twenty-one and approve the loan contract with the State of Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority for a hundred and sixty thousand dollar maximum.
Motion made by Counsel Kenyon, seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counsel Whitney, um, council, do you have any questions or discussion about this?
All righty, um, I might, Mayor, let me look through my notes, I have.
Okay, Bobby, go ahead, while Council in looks.
Um, I was just going to say, I'm really glad we're um, moving forward with this and hopefully this motion is approved because this was very, very important for the water and our citizens, keeping it running is, is just extremely important.
We like water, thank you, Counsel Whitney. Counsel Kenyon, did you find a place?
Yeah, I just had highlighted in the um, financing contract, the section that says repayment commencement date. Okay. Means the first payment date to occur after the project closeout, so um, I think my question on that was gonna be for Erica, I don't, he's here, but maybe Brian would know. Um, we have a way to like, flag our system for, oh, I guess if this project is done this year, then it would need to go into next year's budget. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I would anticipate that first payment probably will not happen until next fiscal year, given that, uh, depending on the timing of the project, so it, it would be a, for the budget committee for next year to build that in, that payment into their, to their forecast.
Right, yeah, you mean this, the budget that we're gonna be working on in the spring?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? Um, uh, I see no other questions, I'm taking my time to make sure I peruse everybody here. Yes, I heard a no, go ahead.
Sorry, so just wanted to know, um, when this is done, does that complete the overall project for the the water project that we started several years ago, had um, I think it was three or four different pieces of the project, will this complete that?
Well, I, I don't know how it was caged uh, three years ago, I mean, the twenty-seventeen Water System Improvement Project closed out when we uh, finished the arbitration with Lasky Clifton and paid off that loan. Uh, I don't, and maybe it was the, I don't know if there was a complete idea of follow-on projects, so I, I'll have to look back and see what, uh, what Robert knows. And the city engineer.
Okay, yeah, I understood it that there was three pieces, was getting the tank put in, getting um, new well. And I forget, I forget what the third was, but we're done and we didn't have the well done.
Right.
We did several test holes that didn't work out for various reasons, and so my question is, if we, when we get this done, does that complete the um, the new well part of that project?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so Friends of Ninety by Thirty, once again, you're muted, mute yourself, please.
I would assume this is not public comment, so, okay.
No, it's not, so please mute yourself and we'll let you know when it is, I promise, we will have a public comment.
Because I've got some stuff to say about that.
Absolutely, we will have public comment before we end the meeting. Thank you. Okay, Council, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Whitney.
Hi.
Counselor Bjornson.
Hi.
Counselor Coker.
Hi.
Mayor Holston.
Hi.
Counselor Kenyon.
Hi.
That's all.
Thank you.
Call on Counselor Hollitt.
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Thank you, Counsel Hollitt, nice to hear that you have so missed in your voice, okay, um, let's move on here. Uh, where am I, okay. Um, we have no public hearings, we have no appointments, we are, we do have an ARPA funding work session that we want to move into. We are at eight-ten, so we will um, we will have a discussion until probably eight-forty and at that point, we will opt for uh, public comment.
Um.
Go that way.
Kathy, would it be possible to entertain just doing our public comment now?
If Council would, would like to do that, that would mean that I would not do public comment after our work session. When we.
Right, and it would allow, it would allow us to uh, have all the time we need for this session.
All right, that's a good suggestion, Council, are you in agreement with that?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, with it. I think I heard everybody say, okay, I didn't hear a no, so okay, good, there you go, and Matt, um, we're going to move into discussion of, of what we can do with our ARPA funds and um, if you welcome, of course, to stay for as much of the continuing sessions as we have. Um, or um, you know, get out of your suit and eye and, and put your feet up. And I do appreciate you being here, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, let's move into the ARPA funding, I'm sorry, no, no. We're going to go ahead and open for public comment, I will remind everybody that you have three minutes and um, that if you have public comment and would like to say something, um, either raise your hand if you know how to do that on Zoom or um, mute yourself and just state your name so that I can put you in the queue. So I do see Sheri has a hand up and I am assuming, and Trudy has a hand up. And Dan Barclay has a hand up. Trudy, Dan. And I am Trudy has two hands up now, but let's see. Um, and then I am assuming that our friend of ninety by thirties to make comment. Ninety by thirty, and anybody at um, City Hall there who wants to make comment, Brian?
More comments? Nothing here.
All right, thank you, all right, let's start with Sheri, Sheri, name, location?
My name is Sheri Osterman, I live at four-eight-three-one-four Hill Street, Oak Ridge, Oregon nine-seven-four-sixty.
Go ahead.
Well, I have a couple of things to say. I'm very sorry to hear that Brian Cutton is leaving us, especially for the fact that when we were looking for someone that is honest and it has clarity to the rules, I don't understand why the council, the mayor, and the rest of the city that works there has no communication. I want you to look back, we left for the last thirty years, for the last thirty years, we've had nothing but discontent, lies, telling us one thing and doing another. I know that the people that are on the council right now knows exactly what I'm talking about. So now, all of a sudden, you put these, a year ago, you, you put out a, a request for a new city administrator, well, we have a good one. You're the one that picked him, you're the one that put him up on a pedestal thinking he's gonna do this job, this great job. Well, he's done a great job. We have a lot of misinformation coming from the city council and when you guys ran for that as candidates for these positions on the council, you have not abided by any of the stuff that you told me so I could vote for you. And I am ashamed to be a member of this town since I lived here most of my life and I have to watch this garbage. If you truly want to keep Brian, you need to start talking, you need to start listening, you need to come up and write a list and take the top priority of what needs to be resolved, then resolve it and go down the list again. So I am asking you as a citizen here in Oak Ridge, Oregon, that you keep in mind that when real election comes up, this town may not make it, we may end up shutting down Oak Ridge, council, mayor, everything, and we'll get, we're gonna end up Lane County. Even though we're part of Lane County, Lane County, so just about it. And I do appreciate you listening to me even though I am highly upset with our council and mayor at this particular point in my life, thank you.
Thank you, Sheri, I appreciate your thoughts and I am as stunned as you are that we are losing a wonderful man. Um, Sheri, uh, now Trudy and then Dan after Trudy, go ahead.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, four-seven-seven-five-two Berry Street. And um, I'm still wondering about the dog licensing, is the animal program that got going, I'd, I'd really like to be involved with how it works and like Sheri mentioned, you going, you know, joining Lane County or are we still um, independently um, taking care of our, our animal services through Oak Ridge as opposed to Lane County?
Have you, so Trudy, have you gone into City Hall to, to get the licensing information?
Uh, no, actually, I was looking, I've been waiting for the online dog licensing form that um, we discussed earlier about having that available in PD.
Available in City Hall, if you'd like to go in and get it, I think it's gonna take a little bit of time to get it online now, it's, you know, it's a bandwidth thing.
Mayor.
Just a moment, please, Jackie, go ahead.
Um, we don't have a form for that.
Okay.
Bring in the rabies certificate and we use that for, as, we don't have one, we don't really need.
So when someone brings in the certificate, then do you issue them a license, is it a paper license, a metal license for their dog?
It's an actual tab that the dog.
Okay, yeah, okay. Well, I just learned something new. Okay, did you get that, Trudy?
I got that, thank you very much.
Sweet, okay, thank you, Jackie.
Welcome.
Did you have another question, Trudy?
Um, no, I, I think that's it and I do wanna extend an appreciation for the hard work that Mr. Cutton has done for our community.
Thank you, Trudy. All right, Dan, you're up.
Yeah, earlier there was a discussion about uh, canceling the ARPA on the engineer and establishing a new committee for uh, for council. I'm uh, I'm quite happy to put my uh, name and I had to uh, be a part of that committee when, when you uh, formulate that, as long as it's not within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. So noted, Dan. Thank you. And um, then, let's see, here, stop, reset. Um, and then this Friends of Ninety by Thirty, did you want to make comment?
I have a question.
Please identify yourself.
Uh, my name's Ben, I live at four-seven-seven-zero-two West Second Street.
Go ahead, Ben.
And also own the bowling alley.
Okay.
When you guys take out loans on the water stuff, is it gonna come back to us as the water rate raise up? I asked that question because I pay on my house and the bowling alley. So, same thing with the safety fee, now I'm paying on my house and the bowling alley where the surrounding areas pay nothing.
I can respond to the water question, Mayor, that's a CA.
Thank you, go ahead.
Uh, know that the loan for the well number two refurbishment will not cause an increase in your water rates. Um, actually, with the inception of the public safety fee, your water rates are going to actually decline, the base rate is uh, because there was a public safety component to that base rate, so it's gonna go down. Um, however, uh, I must, you, you need to know that uh, it is in the resolution and the ordinance, there is a a COLA increase to the water rates each uh, July first. It corresponds to the CPI West uh, cost of living index, and that's the amount that it increases.
All right.
Send in to your question, Ben.
Fair enough.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, I didn't see anyone else, so I don't see anybody. Um, council, can you peruse too, I don't see any. And no one had, had uh, City Hall, okay, so before I, just wanna make sure before I go about ending public comment. All right, so our public comment is now closed, um, we are going to move into uh, item sixteen on our agenda, which is our work session. Um, and uh, this is the American Rescue Plan Act Information Session, and Brian, I will ask you to kick this off before we get going on it. Oh, before you go on, I just want to re, to remind the public who are still on the line and still watching that a work session is an opportunity for council to ask questions informally um, with less rules as far as motions and, and votes. Um, this is informational for us to learn and educate ourselves, it is also um, not a time for public comment um, either during or after our public, our work session. Um, so we welcome you to stay and, and learn with us, and Brian, go ahead.
Okay, uh, council, council would ask to play a role in how uh, the ARPA funds are allocated and expended. Uh, this is part one of probably several parts to move it along that, that direction. Uh, what was it, what was attached to this was a summary uh, which was um, produced by your finance director and then a highlighted interim final rule excerpt from the Treasury Department, which kinda corresponds to the summary somewhat, but it gives you the actual language of, of what it looks like. Um, so what I hope to do with this is, is educate you on what kind of things that you can spend your ARPA funds on and, and so you can make those informed decisions on priorities, knowing that, you know, there is a finite amount of money, three-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand dollars times two, you know, one this year and one next year. And also know that in a previous session, you uh, during the budget cycle, you actually allocated one-hundred-thousand dollars of that three-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand dollars to the operating deficit that we're uh, experiencing. So, for this year, you, you've got two-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand dollars left to uh, to think about and understand these projects can be, the money has to be committed by twenty-twenty-three, the projects have to be completed by twenty-twenty-six, so you can think very long-term in this. And I would encourage you to do that, particularly if you look at um, some of the, sort of the bigger stuff you can do with it with regards to infrastructure, so um, I attached a link to the, the Google Drive, so it'll always be there if you need to go back and refer to it, but um, I guess what I'd like to do, if, if, if you'd like to do that, we can step through each of these and, and talk a little bit about them or we can just take questions if you've already read through them, so I'll, I'll leave it up to the council how they want to proceed.
Um, Brian, I think it would be, you know, helpful if we just quickly go over the um, the, the main points without getting too into depth.
Yeah.
Um, and run through those and then we can go back um, with our thoughts and talk about them a little bit more.
Okay, so um, the first one is public health and economic impacts and, and understand that the ARPA is, is directly attributed to responding to COVID and mitigating the, the impacts of COVID. So, in this particular one, um, there are programs you can set up uh, to help citizens with expenses, there are programs you can uh, put on there to uh, to actually set up city services to help citizens. Um, or there are programs out there to actually, you know, authorize a grant to citizens or businesses um, if they're responding to the public health emergency, so the next one is premium pay and what that is, is uh, understand that, that some essential workers um, continue to work through the pandemic and took higher risks than others, and so the premium pay would offer And so the premium pay would offer you an opportunity to recognize that by giving them premium pay. And this entire um, cycle started March third, twenty twenty-one, so you, you could even go as far as to back pay them or offer it for a certain period of time. Um, revenue loss, I, I had the finance director do a run on it, and we don't qualify for this. You had to show a revenue loss directly attributed to COVID nineteen of a certain level. And he's done the numbers, and we did not uh, across that threshold that would have allowed us to use. And in a sense, this, this would allow you to use the money to um, fund day-to-day operations in the city. Uh, the fourth one is kinda what I spoke of earlier, and that's investment in infrastructure. Um, and primarily water and wastewater. As well as addressing pollution, so you could probably roll in stormwater if you wanted to. Um, and also broadband. So as you know, well, I'll, I'll save my opinions for later sessions, but you can invest in infrastructure, let's put it that way. So those are the, kinda the primary areas. Um, and the specifics are, are in the interim final rule, so I'll open it up for any questions, or if you wanna just take it home and, and, and sort of rest on it for a while and see, and we can, we'll set up another session at some point.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Um, Council Whitney, I see your hand.
Uh, yeah, so I have a question um, in regards to number one, public health and economic impacts. So one thing I know that the state is working on, and it hasn't funneled down from the feds yet, is um, a program that would be similar to lie heap that would help people with water utilities. Um, I was just in contact with Lane County um, earlier today, and, and I know that that isn't really happening yet. And they don't know when or how that will happen. Um, so I'm wondering with that thought in mind, if there would be a way to use some of this funds to, um, so, how do I say this? So we have people that will apply for an exemption for the twenty-two dollar fee due to economic hardship. Um, so that's an economic hardship for them. Can COVID funds be used to reimburse the city, these funds be used to reimburse the city for the twenty-two dollars for each person that applies for that? Do you know what I mean?
Go ahead, Brian.
I would, I would try to keep it separate. I, I wouldn't join the two. Um, but yes, you can use ARPA funds to provide subsidies to people in need. Uh, for water bills or for electric bills or, or whatever you desire to. But I would, I know that the low income water assistance is, is going to happen. And um, I would, I would rather wait to see, I know it's a one-year program and the, and the the unasked question or the unanswered question is, are they gonna extend it to in the, in the following year? So I, I'd like to see how it pans out. I, I know they've got, they're having problems getting the structure together, but I, I truly believe you're gonna see that soon. Uh, but it's something we consider if, if uh, it, it continues to just flounder.
Yeah, I really, um, just from I'm sitting, I employment standpoint, um, we've been at flounder, so we were told it would be starting in September, then November first, now January, but they're having problems with um, getting vendors in Lane County to comply or work with them or want, help people. Um, and then they also don't have anything from the feds yet, so I wouldn't wanna count on that, you know, and, and the amount will be and how many people it will impact is kinda up in there, you know, you just, you don't know, just, um, when we got the first COVID relief funding bill um, for lie heap, the amount of money that we received really wasn't that much. And as the second one came in, it was more money, so you just, you never know how much it's going to be and how quickly we'll go through, um. So really, I, I would hate to on that to help people locally. I would really like to look at something like this if it's possible, because I think it could show a way to um, move money just to help, you know, kinda backfill and realize more that twenty-two dollar fee um, for our city. You know, and, and I know that we need that, those, that funding, and I feel like this is a way that we can use it. And of course, definitely with infrastructure, that's so big for all of us.
Thank you, Bobby. Uh, Council Kenyon and then Council Hollitt.
Um, I wanted to comment that I I think that that hundred thousand dollars is starting to sound like um, the hundred thousand dollars that we set aside. Or that we're going to set aside from this to go towards our um, budget. It could end up that we could use more. But if not, I'd like to consider using uh, the remainder towards programs for helping the community for people that have been affected by um, by COVID, you know, P, uh, not only citizens, but businesses as well, where uh, you know, all businesses here have had to go through multiple levels of um, redesigning or reconfiguring how they interact with customers. Uh, due to COVID and investing in, you know, shields and different ways to protect the community. But also, some of our businesses have actually had to close uh, for a period of time due to COVID. And um, I'll, I kind of apologize, this part that's on the screen right now. I didn't even realize this was on this, this summary was here in our packet until after I had already read forty-five of the hundred and fifteen pages of the main document. It's okay, it was my fault. I, I, as soon as I saw the, I clicked on it and I started reading and um, there's a lot of good information in there, in particular, um, some of the stuff that I was reading about was how money can be allocated to help not only businesses, but actual individual families. Um, you know, some people have, we know we have numbers of people in our area that's had uh, actually had the disease, um, COVID nineteen, they've probably missed a lot of work, they've probably have gotten behind on bills. Um, I, I'd like to see about using some of this money to help, help people that have been affected by COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Council Kenyon. Council Hollitt?
Yeah, I particularly uh, was thinking about the um, suggestion Counselor Kenyon made about businesses that have had to close. Um, just one, for example, spoke a few minutes ago, Ben Ward with the bowling alley. He hasn't been able to um, you know, have any normal operations for some time, and he came in here as a new business and, and invested a lot and has taken a pretty hard hit, and he's just one of the many. Um, so I, I think maybe pursuing that, I like that idea, but um, uh, my question was actually for Brian, wondering what other like cities are doing with this ARPA funds and how they may be distributing it, and if it's in these same um, examples, or if they have other creative ways that they're using, has anything been sent like that?
Well, there's a, there's a lot of uh, kind of flexibility in these topics, so they're, they're all over the map as far as what other cities are doing, and I was gonna save that for perhaps the next session and show some direct examples of of what other cities have done and how successful it's been, if we can figure that out. So rather than, I, I kinda wanted to just kinda provide this homework first, and then, and then I'll add a future session, go into specific projects to give you ideas on perhaps what Oak Ridge could do to help its citizens and, and the city.
All right, um, so I'm, I have three hands up here. Are these all new hands, guys? Um, yes, they are. Okay, good. I'm sorry, I keep flipping back and forth between screens, so I can also read, and then I lose when a hand has come up or gone down. So Counsel Kenyon, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to respond to that, that um, it's, uh, Counselor Hollitt just mentioned wanting to know what other cities are doing, and I'm reading the League of Oregon Cities, um, I forget what that flyer is called, put out, but uh, they're actually doing a poll right now of all cities in Oregon to um, collect data on how cities have determined how they're gonna spend their funds.
Right.
And uh, they're gonna be publishing that in the future, cuz they, their deadline, I think, was November fifth, I wanna say. Which might be tomorrow.
No, I think you're right. I think it seemed like it was the first week in November, they were looking for cities to, to share. And that will be interesting to read, as long as, as well as what uh, Brian was saying, other examples that he has of how cities are using it. You know, it always helps not to have to recreate the wheel, right? Um, Bobby, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on something that um, Counselor Kenyon said earlier. I'm in using some of these funds to help families and businesses, so um, with lie heap, when we processed applications for people impacted by COVID, some of the things we looked at was if people lost their jobs due to COVID, so an income impact or um, just some sort of hardship in their household, and it didn't mean they had to have COVID. Um, because it impacted many people in many ways, or has and still is. Um, but also, um, like a lot of your seniors in the community have stayed home and been more homebound and had to kinda change the way they do things, the way they shop, you know, the way they get their medicines. Um, all of that has impacted or COVID has, you know, created an impact in that way for a lot of people. So, you know, for looking at helping citizens, it's um, is so much bigger than just people who've had COVID, because it's really impacted all of us and, and many, many different ways.
Uh, I agree.
I agree too, and I think um, some of the, some of the difficulty with that is that, you know, um, trying to sort out you know, what, what opportunities were there for, for businesses to um, to get relief funds, and I know that was a mess. Some of them didn't go through fast enough, and others didn't even get an opportunity to put in. Um, and how, how they acquired those. Um, but for the, our individual households that were impacted, I think you know, there is a, there is a degree to which, you know, we can look and, and try to be as, as helpful as we can be compassionate. At the same time, on, on a practical level, uh, practically, you know, speaks to me and says, um, you know, we have funds here that can be used um, uh, to help with, with an aging infrastructure. Um, to help uh, make sure that we are, are viable in the next few years. Um, and it would go toward that without having to get one of those loans that we just signed off on. Um, so, you know, I, I think it's gonna be an interesting conversation on how we balance that, um, because I think we should, should try to do both. Um, if possible, I am curious to see how um, other communities are handling that. How do you allow people to, or encourage people to apply for relief and what types of relief we can do? Um, you know, I know that in some areas, you know, they, they can apply for funeral relief payment. Um, that type of thing, and, and I'm just very grateful that we didn't see a large amount of that here. Um, but yeah, balancing both, because I don't want us to ignore the fact that this is a, a pool of money that could really go a long way toward helping some of those areas that we just don't have the money for, or that we end up having to buy loan, get loans for and pay interest, but it was just my thoughts. I'm, I'm open to being educated about all of this. Counsel Kenyon, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to point out that um, we still have the other half coming next year. And
Yes.
The process for deciding, I think, how, how we're gonna spend it is gonna be a pretty healthy process, but um, I don't know, in my mind, I was thinking in um, in regards to infrastructure, I know we have a much needed uh, I and I project, which is uh, probably, well, I remember an estimate back in twenty fifteen or sixteen. The estimate being a couple of million dollars for that project. So, and it's likely gone up since then. Um, so the, the amount of each of these distributions isn't gonna prevent us from having to get a loan to do those projects. Uh, in my opinion. And um, so for me, I was just in reading all the stuff in this uh, I forget what they call this packet that Brian sent out, the um,
Interim Final Rule.
Sorry, final rule, exactly. Um, in so many ways, people have, and businesses have been affected, it just really hit me that um, that I really think we should consider helping, giving back to our community, and that would stimulate our economy here, both um, individuals and um, businesses. I mean, I, I hadn't even thought about, one of the things that was mentioned in that um, final rule project was that uh, low-income communities, a lot of um, physicians have seen actually, because ki- kids stayed home all year last year. And a, a lot of low-income communities' homes have lead-based paint. They actually saw a rise in lead-based paint poisoning in children over the course of the last year. I mean, that's just one of the ways that um, things have really changed for everyone everywhere. So I like to, I'd like to consider that for our community. That's my reasoning, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. I'm assuming you weren't considering the lead-based paint for our community, but.
No, no, no.
No, I understood.
Consider utilizing the, uh, the remainder. I mean, I do think that we can use that first hundred thousand for you know, for the hu- the, whatever the raised pay for
Yeah.
Uh, pe- employees, staff that have um, a direct, that directly work with COVID.
Premium pay.
Premium pay, thank you.
Yeah.
Actually, they'd be paid under a different section of it. Premium pay is actually overtime or increased pay. This would be, is another part of the, the, of the policy that allows you to actually pay employees that were directly involved in uh, taking care of COVID nineteen situations. So um, we're tracking that at the fire department, and our intent is to use that hundred thousand towards those ambulance runs, those COVID runs, those visits, and pay, be able to pay those uh, folks or get repaid for the payments we made to those folks that were on duty at the time.
But, um, but I actually read in there that the, um, it says for administrative convenience, the recipient, recipient may consider public health and safety employees to be entirely devoted to mitigating or responding to COVID nineteen public health emergency, and therefore are fully covered. If the employee or his or her operating unit or division is primarily dedicated to responding to COVID.
That's the, that's the part that I didn't agree with, cuz our firefighter paramedics are not primarily responding to COVID nineteen every day. It's just calls, a number of calls per month, so I don't know that they would fall under that totally committed to combating COVID nineteen.
Oh, and I understood this to mean that because, because they have to for convenience, we can consider it at all times.
I, I, I guess we can talk about that at future sessions, we get down to the nitty-gritty.
Sure, sure. So, I mean, you know, council, I just wanna point out that, you know, this is gonna be a learning process for all of us and um, a thinking process of looking at what other communities are doing, um, taking suggestions um, from the administration, throwing them around, figuring out how we can help our community best. And then it doesn't just stop there. It means that we have to And then it doesn't just stop there. It means that we have to figure out a way to make this happen um, as far as what is fair and, and transparent for our community, um, and that type of thing. Um, and so, you know, this isn't, walk away from this meeting saying, oh, so-and-so wants this and so-and-so wants that. Um, this is, this is an ongoing uh, live discussion that we're going to be having so that we can come to a good agreement for best use for our community. Um, so I encourage you to um, to go ahead and, and do that hundred-page reading if you can. Um, some of it is going to be a little, a li- a, a, a little convoluted um, because it's, it, some of it is just governmental and legalese lan- language. But anything you can do, run across, um, I noticed that Council Canyon had posted on her, on her uh, counselor page that there would be examples coming out from other communities through the League of Oregon Cities, they just set that out. Um, if you run across other, their ideas, don't hesitate. And the way to communicate to everybody um, is to send it to this A and ask him to send it to all the council. Um, if you run across an article, hey, this sounds really cool, um, I, I want us all to know about it. Consider this just an active, ongoing work session, uh, you try to hammer this out. Brian, can you give some sort of a timeframe that you were anticipating um, you would like to see also follow?
I think we can, uh, what I'd like to do is get the direction from council in, in about two or three sessions.
Okay.
Depending on how many, how much ti- how much work you want to do as far as added work sessions or whether, whether you want to fold it into existing uh, regular sessions. And understand that part of the process, which council might consider, is sort of a town hall type thing where you could get the citizens' input on how they want to spend this money, it's truly theirs, so.
Okay.
It's actually highly recommended in this big document too.
Right, um, so we can figure out how to make that happen also. Um, and probably, you know, since we do, you know, we do have time, it doesn't have to happen right away. But in, I don't know, but how do you, how does the feeling maybe have, looking toward January? Toward, I mean, a town hall in, after the beginning of the year? Um, what does that sound like? Hollitt, I see your hand pop up.
I was just raising my hand for exactly what you're saying right now. I was going to say, I really like the town hall um, so that we include our community and, and how we um, disperse this money. January seems a little too far out to me, but with holidays and everything, I know that's always a troubling time, though. Um, does Brian have an idea of when, um, if, if January is too far out?
No, I think we can probably get one more work session to look at projects and then uh, follow the, make a third session, the town hall and then the fourth session, kind of the rack and stack prioritizations to let the uh, staff actually do the work that's required to set up the, the projects that you want to do.
Okay, so you're saying we can, we'll do maybe another work session?
Let's do a work session with council, maybe in December. And
Okay.
That, and then set it up and we'll start working towards a town hall right after the new year. And then at the end of January, have the, kind of the rack and stack session on prioritization of projects.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable.
Okay.
What do you mean by projects?
Well, you kind of have to have an idea of, of what you want to do with it, so you, you need to structure it in some way. I, I don't necessarily mean it's hiring a contractor or anything, it's just a matter of saying, okay, we want to set up a program that allows us to deliver grant money, an example, and so that would be the project.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, Counselor Canyon, go ahead.
Um, shoot, I lost it. I'll have to.
You know, I think, I think there's something to be said for each of us having a wax pen that we can just write on our computer screens when we think of a question. I don't know that works, but I, I sure would like it. Um, okay, this, this sounds pretty good then. Brian, when you send out a doodle poll, will you include a, a poll for a work session for this also? And I see your thought.
Um, I was wondering if this uh, our city website, that I could share it to the community.
I, I messed up most of that, uh, counselor, can you repeat yourself?
Uh, yes, is the um, the document?
The interim final rule.
Thank you. So sorry, I'm losing one. Is that already posted on our city website?
I may have posted it in the news feed some time ago, but a link to it anyway, but I can, I'll post the highlighted one because it's probably easier for folks to digest and I'll also post the summary that Eric developed. And maybe just generate an entire new ARPA page that we can send people to, to get all the info.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. I wanted to be able to share from there, or maybe I can just share the link from
Right.
That we got.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea too. Um, and you know, just remembering that, reminding everybody that this is an opportunity to um, to really kind of learn about what the funds are that we've been given and, and make some decisions that no decisions have been made yet. I, I, I hesitate, um, you know, because this community tends to, tends to get into lofting the ball around fast uh, that no decisions have been made yet. This is why we're reaching out and asking um, people to become informed as well as the council and that we will then proceed to make decisions. So let's emphasize that as we have our narrative with our community, um, at least I would encourage you all to consider doing that. Um, okay, I don't see any other hands up. We're at fifty-two. Um, and Donna, oh, it flashed down. I was going to ask if you had any other questions. Okay, Counselor, is there anything that, that you want to conclude about this um, work session and ARPA? Uh, Brian, thank you for putting this all together and um, you know, getting this behind the line and, and ready to start kicking the ball down the, down the field. It's going to be an interesting, it's going to be interesting. Actually, I'm kind of looking forward to it, because there's so many opportunities out there. Um, Counselor Canyon, you popped your hand up again.
Yeah, I did just, one more thought I wanted to mention earlier and forgot to was that um, the pandemic is not over.
We still
It's not. We still got uh, who knows how long to go.
Yes.
Before it's over, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
I agree with you, Counselor Canyon, and it's a good reminder to all of us. If you haven't gotten your vaccination, get your vaccination. If you're qualified for your booster, get your booster. Um, you are protecting yourself and your loved ones and your community. Um, continue to wear your masks, be aware of, of your distancing, be aware of those who are more compromised than you. Um, and I think we'll get through this. You're right, Counselor Canyon, remind all of us, this is not over yet. Um, so let's not lock our guard down, especially as we move into the holidays and everybody wants to hug everybody and share their cocoa. All right, guys, it is eight um, fifty-two. And um, I will um, call an end to this work session and also to this council session. Have a good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Have a good night.